All right. As chairman of the Northampton School Board, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of COVID-19 pandemic, in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order 2020-04, this public body has authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which is authorized pursuant to the governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I'm confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access, possibly by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the Northampton School Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through this platform and public access to listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number, 646-876-9923, and webinar ID 847-3579-8478, or by clicking on the following website listed on the agenda. B, providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing this meeting, including how to access the meeting using Zoom or telephonically. Instructions have also been provided on the website of the SAU 21 office. C, providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there's a problem with access. If anyone has a problem, please call 603-926-8992, extension 103, or email r evans@SAU21.org. Four, adjourned the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes taken during this meeting shall be done on roll call votes. Let's start this meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there's anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required by the right to know law. Who will now take your roll call?
Greg Duffy.
Present and alone.
Martin Tavishian.
Present and alone.
Nermina Peterson.
Present with family.
And Tom Von Jess.
Present alone.
I have the roll call taken.
Thank you, Rhonda. Okay, welcome to the budget season. This is our first meeting to review the budget. And typically, we'll start this with a presentation from the administration and/or the SAU to kind of go over the high level before we dig into the hundreds of pages of details.
Thanks, thanks, Greg. And thank you all for, you know, for joining us with this budget session. I, we really do appreciate you taking the time. I know there's a lot of documentation, a lot of materials that are included. So, and I, I know you, you all spend a lot of time really reviewing and going over those documents. So, so thank you. This is a long process and we appreciate it. So I just want to review some, some process and housekeeping items first. So, you know, as you know, we, we take great care, you know, presenting, presenting you, the, the school board, a budget. And I just want to take a moment to, you know, to really indicate, you know, how, how hard Susan, Becca, and Aisha, the hard work that they put forth, coordinating with the various departments, working with their teachers and their staff, to really identify and then, and determine what, what the school needs for this coming year and looking out a full, you know, 12 to 18 months in advance. So really, I wanna, I wanna take a moment and thank them. They are really amazing. Building administrators are doing a great job, as well as Nancy Tuttle, who, you know, who really, you know, worked closely with them throughout this whole process and, and the SAU. And she, you know, the hours spent is amazing on her end as well. So, you know, when we, when we present a budget to the, you know, to the board, there's, there's a significant amount of pre-work that's been done prior to this, this moment in time. You know, there's been many, many hours put into it, you know, where I just, you know, mentioned as far as from the building level. And then, and then they present to the SAU their proposed budget, and at which point we go through every account, every expenditure, every page. You know, multiple meetings, many hours go into that process. So, at which point, the, you know, the, the school board gets, you know, owns the budget. And, and that's, and that's, that's the point where we, you know, where we are now, where we go through, you know, this, this process. The board then delivers their confirmed budget to the, to the budget committee. That's gonna happen in November. And then, the budget committee will hold a public hearing in January. There's a deliberative session in February. It's February 2nd this year. And at that point, the community has the ability to either increase or decrease the budget, provide their input, and then it goes to ballot for voter approval in March. So it's the second Tuesday in March, so this year it's March 9th. So for this budget season, we're very cognizant of the current economic conditions, as well as those potential town revenue shortfalls. And, you know, our community members, the potential that, that they could be struggling financially during this pandemic. That being said, we feel that we, we have a budget that we're bringing forth that, that is fiscally responsible, but also achieves our goal of offering really a successful, high-performing school operation that's aligned with our school improvement goals while developing long-term, you know, you know, quality, you know, goals for the, you know, for Northampton moving forward. So those, those school improvement goals are, are very important because we're looking at aligning those goals to budget priorities that align with accounts and actual costs and expenditures. So, the first item or the first goal or priority that we're looking at is, is really, you know, looking at staffing as a whole. So, um, so we're looking at maintaining a stable staffing pattern for our, for our classrooms. With enrollment that we anticipate is going to be fairly level with last year. So not this current year. We're, we're currently at about 313 students, but we're looking at, you know, 245 in 2019, 20, 238 in 2021, 22. This is based on our actual enrollments this year. And we've reached out to families to determine whether they're, they're indicating, whether they'll be attending, they'll be sending their students back either from a homeschool environment or private school environment. So we have gotten a good response from those families. And that's, we're looking at about 338 students next year. But more importantly, we really want to provide that stable staffing because there is substantial research that indicates that students who have experienced the type of interruption that this pandemic has caused, make, you know, it, it does, it does cause, you know, stress. It causes, you know, frustration. It costs literacy gaps, as well as other academic gaps in their learning process. You know, evidence has shown that, that schools can close that gap, but it can oftentimes take, it's a long-term fix up to two years. So as such, we really strongly believe that maintaining these current staffing levels are really critical for our students, particularly when we're looking at our early learners. Further, we're, you know, we, we aren't expecting a, that, as I mentioned, a much of a decrease in enrollment. We, we did, I did address this very quickly with the budget committee as far as our enrollment projections, because as, as you may recall, last year, we, we budgeted for this year to conduct another round of enrollment projections. However, we're pushing that off another year until we have better data. And the budget committee did understand that. I mean, frankly, you know, if we utilize the data this year that, that we have with current enrollments, it's, it's not particularly helpful. But we're pretty, we're pretty solid with that 338 students. And we, we feel that our current staffing does, does align with, with that enrollment numbers. Secondly, we want to increase the use of systemic phonics instruction, as well as word study by adding, adding to our existing foundations program. So that's, that will be adding a third grade level. I have, I have personally researched this topic for my own children because I'm, you know, I'm your typical high maintenance parents. And I can't stress the, the importance of that, you know, of early literacy and continuing that phonics instruction through the early grade levels. Bill laughed because he saw some of the, those terrible emails that I sent to the principal. You know, early, early literacy.
I've been there on the same map, so.
Early, early, early learners' literacy levels really do have long-term ramifications on a student's educational career. So this, this is really an important initiative that we're, we're, you're rolling out to a third grade level. We're also looking to incorporate long-term planning for our technology needs, as well as our replacement cycles for our technology equipment. This is reflected in our new technology plan that was, that's just, just been recently developed. And it has a heavy emphasis on student devices. Similarly, we are looking to prioritize the purchase of equipment for, for setup in our classrooms. So that'd be smart boards. This will provide that interactive instructional presentations. And we're also keeping in mind investment needs for our infrastructure. And that's, that, those are, that's all reflected in our technology accounts with, you know, wireless upgrade devices and, and smart boards. And this is really a two-year process. We are looking at, I'm sorry, we're looking at, uh, multi, where am I? Sorry, I just lost my train of thoughts. We're looking at providing a multi-tiered system of support. So this will, this MTSS is the acronym. So this, this is, provides the opportunity to challenge not only our, you know, our struggling students with interventions, but also we'll be able to challenge our advanced students. And this will, this will continue our hard work of, you know, of fostering, you know, that, that, that intervention piece that we had invested in last year. We're also looking at fostering a positive school culture and climate, as well as providing the necessary resources to, to achieve all of these goals. Finally, we are looking to, to commit to a foreign language instruction program review. We've identified, you know, world language as an area that, that needs to be reviewed at a holistic level. So I think we've, you know, during Bill's entry, entry plan, he had indicated the need for these curriculum program reviews. I, I know we've, we've talked about math. World language is, is that really right up there with math as far as one of our top initiatives. So this is something that could potentially affect future staffing investment. However, we do need to, we do need to conduct that comprehensive program review to determine what the focus is, our needs and our, you know, the resources that are incorporated within that. So, so in short, we, we do feel that we can achieve these goals and these priorities. And by, you know, to really provide an exceptional learning experience and, you know, school operation. And we can do that with a very fiscally responsible 0% increase to the budget. This is actually $109,000 less than the default budget. And we're also not proposing any additional warrant articles this year. You know, our expendable trusts are at or near our target balances. Additionally, we've, you know, we, the technology expendable trust was a topic of discussion as far as how to utilize that at last budget year's cycle. And that was addressed during the technology planning process. And we, we feel, or the, the technology committee feels that we can, we can spend down those funds as part of our technology plan. And then, our, our, our funding levels in the operating budget will meet the, the remainder of our needs there. So, so we're not looking to invest further in the technology expendable trust. We have an annual long-term maintenance warrant article that, you know, we, we work closely with, with facilities to determine that we can push off the playground resurfacing an additional year. We, we also had some homeland security upgrades, but we can utilize a building expendable trust to fund those. So, so we're trying to be, we're trying to be cognizant of the, you know, the, the financial, you know, issues that the, our community is facing, while still providing, you know, a high-quality operation. So as part of that 0% increase, I will note that, that we do have cost of living adjustments for our three employee classifications. So that includes a 2.75% cost of living adjustment for, for our teachers. That's under this, that's per the C CBA. We have a 1% cost of living adjustment for our paraprofessionals, our educational associates per the CESA CBA, and our non-union employees at 0.8% per the CPI. So the Consumer Price Index that we benchmark against, in benchmarking inflation. And that's what we've utilized the last number of years for the, our non-union staff. I'll also note that we have aligned our salary schedules for our non-union staff. And we did have a few missing schedules for some of our professional staff that we, that we added. However, we slotted them in at their, at the closest step, their closest current step. So there is really no budget impact there. Finally, the, the biggest driver in this budget is, is retirement. So unfortunately, the state of New Hampshire retirement system has dramatically increased employer contribution levels. This is after really, I mean, they've, they've kind of kicked the can down the road and neglected to properly fund the state's pension obligations for the last few decades. So as such, you know, local pounds are responsible for this unfunded pension obligation in years past. So this is gonna affect not only our educators, but our police, our fire, and all our other municipal employees. And that's, that's about 3% increase. It's 3.22 for our teachers and I think 2.89 for our, for our other staff. And that represents $134,000 increase. And, and when you look at it as a whole, we are, we're paying retirement costs of 20 cents on the dollar for every, you know, between 15 and 20%, whether you're a teacher or, or a, a staff member toward that, toward retirement. So that's a, that's a significant cost. Other drivers include, we have a pretty big decrease in special education tuition due to an outer district placement, aging out, as well as a decrease in health insurance. And, and I will mention on the health insurance account, this represents some staffing change, like election changes, how, as well as a very modest 3.4% guaranteed maximum rate for health insurance premiums. But really, the, the, the primary reason for the decrease is we're planning to utilize $85,000 from the healthcare expendable trust, but only if necessary, only if the, the budget can't, can't absorb that cost. Because if you recall, the guaranteed maximum rate is, is, is the maximum as of October. We don't get our actual rates until March after we've already gone through the budget process, have an approved budget. So there's oftentimes a differential there. And we end up paying less than what the, what we budget in the GMR. So this was, the expendable trust offers us that ability to hedge a little bit in under budget for the, for healthcare, you know. And, and oftentimes, that variance covers that cost. And of course, if not, we can, that's what the trust is there for, and we'll make that withdrawal. So included in the budget materials, you'll see there's a principal's narrative. Susan did a really nice job putting together a summary. We have a PowerPoint of the budget, a spreadsheet outlining each account with, with, with the variations, historical averages on the last couple of years of, of costs. However, I will note that when we look at historical spending this year, we, we had to take into account last year's expenditures as a third of the year was remote. So some of those, some of those accounts weren't fully expended because we, we recognized significant savings not being in school. We have, we've also included enrollments, as well as the estimated classroom configurations by grade level, our estimated revenues, expendable trusts, federal grant information, salary schedules, and the, the, the cost of living history, as well as the operating budget worksheets. So, um, so typically, what we've done is we've gone through our budget worksheets, page by page. I, you know, we've had some school boards that have, you know, have ju, if, you know, if they've spent the time to go through, through, through the budget in detail, they've only wanted to do the PowerPoint. But since we have a couple of new board members, I think it probably, it, it makes sense to go page by page. So I would, I would suggest that we start with the, the worksheets. And if there's any questions before starting, we, we could start on page two.
Thank you, Matt. Tom?
Thank you. So Matt, I'll follow your lead on this. First of all, thank you all for your work and thank you for, for that kind of overview. I think, for me anyways, I'm gonna want to get into more conversation around staffing, the beneficial part of stat, overstaffing, especially in third and fourth grade, what the implications would be, how we measure things. So I don't know whether we do this now or whether we talk about it when we hit the, that, that line item in the budget. But I just want to put out there that I think we need more robust conversation around deviating from the staffing policy.
Yeah, absolutely. And we, and that, that's the first page. So that's, that's, that's how we can, we can, we would start the, the budget. That's always the, the fun page number one. So we can get right into it if you'd like.
Yeah, I agree with you, Tom. And it, I, I remember it's, it's early in the process, so we can talk about, talk about staffing right away.
Okay. So I guess my, my first question is, you know, I hear you loud and clear that there may be benefits to having lower teacher to student ratio, especially to help people catch up. When I look at this and I see just jumping off the page, third and fourth grades being staffed at, at, you know, three and 13, when you could do two and 19 and a half and still be within the parameters. I want to understand more about the advantage to students of that and whether or not we're doing that for third and fourth grade and then other grades that are still at the normal staffing level, if they don't get the same benefit as a result. You know, are we, how, how are we looking at this? You mentioned that there's data that shows that there'll be a positive impact. I'd want to understand what that, what that data set is and what it does show. I'd also want to understand that there is a current deficit that we need to overcome and how we're gonna measure that success going forward. Because even if, if we deviate, we need to know that in '22, '23, if we're not seeing what we need to see, we might need to make the, make the staffing adjustments to, to get it, to get it right. I mean, it, it just, like I said, it jumped off the page to me right there in, in three and four. You could probably even argue that, you know, grade two, you could do two at 20. That would be a little bit over, over class size. And then I understand middle school, you don't have the same situation because you need the teaming. But even some of those, you know, when you look at six and seven, the student to teacher or the class size is, is outside of the guidelines. So to do it in four of nine grades is a kind of a big overswing.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, Susan.
Well, do you want me to give a little, a little bit of context? Or do you want to answer first?
No, I think it'd be great if you could speak to it. Thank you.
So we, we, we'd like to keep some flexibility as to where those sections of two and where's those sections of three actually roll out. And some of the unknowns, although we did make phone calls and, and attempt to get our best numbers for returning students who chose to homeschool or who may have gone to private school for the year. The bulk of those were in the, were in kindergarten, honestly, kindergarten and first grade. And so we're unclear how many of those students would come back for kindergarten, whether they kind of redshirted for the year or whether they would come back to first grade. And so it's possible that the two sections might, or the three sections might not be in fourth grade. They might be in first grade instead. So that's why we kind of labeled it as, as a stable staffing pattern. I don't think that when the budget goes to the public in general, that that chart goes with it, does it, Matt?
It, it's typically included in the materials to the budget committee, and these are all public documents.
Okay. Well, it, it was our intention to have a little bit of flexibility to determine because generally speaking, principals have the discretion to reassign teachers to different grades, depending on the need within the school. So there was, there is some level of, of guesswork involved in the numbers, although we did our best to, to determine, which, you know, we made a lot of phone calls to, to families to find out what their plans were. There were a couple of families that said, you know, we don't know yet. It depends on, you know, safety levels at school, like, I mean, in terms of COVID and things like that. So, so, you know, we, we did want to maintain some flexibility. We are using the Fountas and Pennell Benchmark Assessment System for reading assessments. And we've, we've actually been successful in getting the baseline scores for all of the students in K through five right now. Or no, sorry, first through fifth grade. We don't do the kindergartners until mid-year. And so what we've seen that seems to indicate as likely a result of the interruption of direct instruction in the primary grades is, is lower than expected scores in first grade and second grade, and then pockets of those low scores in other grades to the point where, you know, it's, we're concerned about that. So we, we will be using the Fountas and Pennell Benchmark Assessment System to measure the reading growth and to determine the success of interventions that we'll be putting into place this year and the success of core instruction. And we're using assessments that are part of the Bridges Math Program in the elementary grades. And then the middle school uses a Houghton-Mifflin product for reading assessment. And I believe their math tool is related to their math program. Becca could speak to that in more detail, and she's available to jump in with us if, if that's helpful.
So what we're finding is currently that students are behind in math and behind in reading.
Our best results are in reading right now. We're still in the process of assessing math. Our best results are in reading right now. We're still in the process of assessing math. So in being in the younger grades, we have we we have some scores that we would like to really work on and 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 push resources into, and then pockets in other areas. So we're, you know, we're still in that really broader assessment phase. The teachers are beginning small group work, they're starting to target the skills. And, you know, we're working to provide supports for for resources for for students as well, and for teachers.
So is the best solution to that, in your experience, having an extra teacher, an extra grade, or having a special, a reading specialist that can help with the students who need the help?
So I I think it depends on what the, you know, where we are at a certain point, which is, you know, which is why we would really like to keep the flexibility of having this staffing pattern. I I feel like there are a number of factors in place. We do have the full-time literacy specialist. One of the challenges that we're having right now is, is because of the pod structure that we've created for for health and safety during a pandemic, where we've limited the ability of the reading teacher to work across, in person, to work with across all the grades. And we put the math resource in upper elementary and the reading resources in the primary grades. And so that's been a little bit, a little bit tricky for us to measure the effectiveness of of, you know, or actually, we wouldn't be able to measure yet, but we're worried about being able to measure the effectiveness in the first half of the year, given these restrictions that we're working under.
Right. So so thank you for answering my questions. Where I sit right now, and this is just my opinion, we don't know what what's going to happen in in twenty one, twenty two. We don't know if we're gonna need the the restrictions with the pods and and the rest. Being out of line with basically at least two additional staff, classroom teachers, then the policy and class size shows when we already have, in my opinion and experience, pretty good class sizes in Northampton. It it's, it's tough. I understand why the administration would make the recommendation. I understand why the staff would want it that way. I also understand from a fiscal responsibility standpoint, unless we can demonstrate exactly what we're going to do for the students in the school overall, and the need for it, and I don't hear those clear proof statements yet. It's a, it's a wish and flexibility that I have a hard time supporting this staffing.
Well, so there's, there's one other component that that you may find compelling, that we, that I find particularly compelling in my experience of working with students who are demonstrating achievement gaps. And that is that we would wish to put our most skilled instructors with our students who are struggling the most. And in that vein, and in that regard, it it's always the classroom teachers who have that, that level of expertise in the curriculum and in instructional practices. So we took a hard look at our E A support and really wished to have, you you know, what we tried to do was look to see how we might be able to limit those numbers in order to maintain this current staffing pattern. And so if you look a little further down, I don't know if that's, this is the time to bring that up, but.
He's gone. Yeah, but I don't know that it's either or, right? I mean, if you don't need the E As, you don't need the E As. The staffing for the classrooms is, you know, out of, out of whack, that it can be both, right? Doesn't have to be, we did this for that.
Well, I I guess I wouldn't call it this for that, but it, I think it's a matter of of how you're supporting kids. And there, whether your staffing changes or not, the needs don't go away. So.
Tom, I would say that the, the, it's not this for that, but in my experience, this is an exercise in looking at adults in classrooms and focusing on keeping classroom teachers. I mean, I I built eleven budgets in Brookline, and the tagline in every one of those budgets was we're going to first put our resources into classrooms, into classroom teachers, right? And and we did make reductions in, in regular education, E A support, in order to do that. So so it's not, it's, it's not a this for that, but it is a focus on, on classroom teachers. I think the other part I would add is, you know, and this may not be compelling to a budget committee, but we we didn't spend money this year that we didn't need, right? We had a position that became open, and we didn't fill it. And we would do the same thing. I mean, these numbers next year, as Susan has just said, are harder to estimate than normal, because we've got people who've left and who are telling us they're going to come back, right, from homeschooling, and are giving us sort of mixed messages on whether they might come back to kindergarten or first grade. And so we're making best guesses, but if next spring the numbers don't play out that way, we won't fill the position, because the position's open.
So that may, that, that may be the most helpful. So so, for example, you, I agree that this administration and the board has been very responsible in years past with with budgets. And last year, as an example, making sure that we were, we were careful as well. So there's no question about that. I also believe we need to make sure that we continue to demonstrate that, and that we may need to explain that we're, this is, this is our current staffing, and this is we're requesting additional staffing if there's a need, but if we don't have the need, we're not gonna, we're not gonna do it. That's different than saying, you know, let's, let's go in knowing that we're, we're, we're gonna be overstaffed. And I understand it's just based upon the policy. I'm not trying to say that in a bad way. But it's a, it's gonna be a tough sell to walk in and show this without having data and 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 kind of proof that it's needed. It's gonna be a tough sell.
Great. So, Tom, your concern is around, is the, is the sell around the, it's really the thirty nine. It's the, it's the third and fourth thirty nine kids in a class, which is right at that cusp of of twenty per, which gives it into three classes instead of two, and then creates a really small number.
Yeah, so it's third and fourth, and then, you know, I, there's, there's the other part about six, seven, and eight. The middle school is, again, that they're not, their average class size is low, except for in seventh grade. Now, that you can explain because of the, because of the, the need to do the teaming, and you can kind of walk through how that that might happen. But third and fourth, you just say, well, why are we at thirteen when, when we could be in range at nineteen and a half? We get both classes in range with, with two teachers instead of three, and that's a, that's a good chunk of money. Two teachers and all the benefits, right?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, and if, and if that's where the conversation were forced, right, if that's where we end up, Susan and I might disagree on this, but but that's where I would go as opposed to the primary grades. I would not, I would not raise those primary grades. I, I, I build a career on keeping class sizes smaller at primary grades, and in fact, your, your, your parameters suggest the same thing.
So, and can I just add that, you know, if if we got a few more kids in first grade, I would absolutely reallocate it that way. Just as Bill says, it just seemed like with just thirty kids, it would be hard to make an argument to have three classes of ten.
Yes.
But I, I'm on board with that completely. So, you know, just depends who comes back, and if they go to first grade or kindergarten.
I think the thing that makes it fuzzy for me is, is the, is the massive variable around enrollment next year, which we just don't know. And I would, I'm, I don't like being out of policy, first of all, especially when you're trying, when you're talking to bean counters. And I'm nervous that if we made a move, Tom, and and next year yields a different result, we'll be, I mean, we can always adjust for it at that moment, but we're gonna have to scramble to find, to find money for it.
Well, then I almost, I almost wonder if there are then two two projections, right? We have like a high and a low. This is what we think the maximum, you know, projection's gonna be for, for enrollment. Here's, here's the low, and then we have, you know, almost like two staffing models. And if we hit the high, we need to spend the money. If we don't, then we already put, put a line in the stand or a stake in the ground, whatever you want to call it, to say, we're not gonna, we're not gonna hire additional if we're at the lower, the lower number. But because it's such a variable year, we're not sure, so we need to make sure that we budget higher, knowing that we'll only spend the money when needed.
And and more than an enrollment number, Susan, if I'm correct from our conversations earlier about this, more than a total enrollment number, it it's based on a set of assumptions about where kids go and if they return. Well, more, more about where they go. It's at K one, as much as anything else, right? It's really in that assumption about when those kids return, are they coming back redshirted? Or did they, or are they moving on to first grade?
I mean, honestly, one scenario that's, that's possible is that the kindergarten comes in slightly lower, and the first grade comes in higher. Because kindergarten, we, you know, we, we adjusted these numbers down from the projections. The last two years, the kindergarten projections, based on the documents from the consultants from a few years ago, were much higher. And we adjusted them down to to actuals, you know, plus an educated guess about who'd be coming back from the years before. So like, the, the, the projection for this current year was forty six or forty seven, and we had thirty two or thirty three before everything happened. So that wasn't very close. And so we had, you know, we had already adjusted it down, but originally, some of those numbers were very, were much higher. So the kindergarten numbers are are really tricky for us.
So so we're touching upon, you know, a real, real issue that we've been struggling with throughout this process. So because there is so much uncertainty this year, I know I've personally struggled with this very issue. I, I think it's a good idea, what what Tom just proposed, into kind, into kind of offer up two different options, and then make a firm commitment if we fall under a certain threshold of students, that we don't fill that position. I think we've, we've shown that we, that in the past, that we had, like, when, when, when there have been funds available, and or positions that are open, that we're not going to needlessly fill them. I mean, we did that this year with the kindergarten position. You know, when this, when this pandemic hit, we we had available funds to potentially invest, but we, we made a commitment to return those funds to the town, and we, we did not expend those funds. I think, I think the budget committee recognizes that we, we make every effort to return as many funds as possible back to the town, and we don't, we don't spend needlessly. So I, I, I would like to propose that we, you know, that we, we do what Tom just, just suggested, and and provide two different options, and then, you know, perhaps, and maintain staffing with the commitment to not fill it next year at a certain level, that we can, we can bring back at the next budget work session for your review. Does that make sense?
I mean, I, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to hamstring anybody by taking away flexibility. I just, I want to also just make sure that we're, we're stepping forward with something that we're gonna be able to move through and 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 not, not be out of, out of policy.
No, I mean, this, you've touched upon the, the very, the, the issue that we've been going back and forth on this entire, the last month. And we've had much discussion on. So it's, it's, there's, I, there are no great answers, but I think this is a good compromise to, to address it. So so it wouldn't be two options. We, we, we have to choose a path and lay out two possible scenarios. Because it wouldn't be about filling positions. If if this doesn't come to fruition, it would be about eliminating positions. Correct? Correct. So, and and there is some variability there, because it's also, as we we discussed, it, it depends where those numbers come in at, like, at what grade level. So that, that could, so it's not like a, we're not gonna be able to say, you know, three hundred and thirty eight students, you know, you know, or a certain number, you know, we would make a reduction. It would be we that, we, I, I think we'd have to play with this and see, and see exactly how we we present it. But, you know, there is some variability there based on what classes they they come in at. Yeah, Tom, you've been sitting on the bud, budget committee. Is there, have they dug in this deep yet? And 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 their narrative around these, these two classrooms that are below the policy?
Not, not around these two classrooms, but around the, the perception, and it's absolutely a perception, around a perception in the past that we were staffed above policy. And we've, thanks to Matt, we've shared with them the fact that that's not the case, that we've been kind of staying within the ranges. And when we did have a reduction in enrollment before, we, we did the financially responsible thing. It will, I guarantee, come up. And it would be much better if we had scenario one that fell within policy, right? So, and then scenario two, that we think that enrollment could go up, and as a result, we, we need to budget the larger amount of money, and then we, we budget the larger amount of money, and if the enrollment's not there, we, we don't, we don't fill those positions. I'm, I'm not, I'm not opposed to budgeting for, for this for, for the level staffing. I'm opposed to having level staffing if enrollment declines.
I agree. And so for me, the variable is that we don't know what the staffing, what the enrollment is next year because of the variability of, of COVID. And so, let me just clarify, kind of the words you used when you said, we won't add to the staff. There was, there's never, the lo- the low, kind of the low scenario isn't about adding, it's about taking away.
Correct. So correct, I apologize. But, but someone also said a little while ago that some of these positions are open. We wouldn't fill.
That's the part I'm trying to flesh out, because I don't, you can't, we can't get like halfway through the year and say, oh, it turns out it's a low, it's low, so we're gonna, you know, eliminated staff halfway through the year. So I, I guess I'm unclear on, on when you run the two scenarios, what's the, it's the next year where we say, look, if, 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 if population doesn't come back, we're prepared next year to make those adjustments. But this year, we don't want to, because the variable, we don't know what we're gonna get this immediate next, next year.
Right. We reached, we reached a point this year where Susan maybe would remember the date, where we decided we were not gonna fill that kindergarten position.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, and next year, we have more variables that are up in the air, many more variables that are up in the air. But in, well, normally, in May or so, those variables will become clearer, normally, right? So assuming, assuming a normal transition into twenty one, twenty two, we would have some information by then, where we'd be in a May-June timeframe of saying, yeah, we're not gonna fill X position.
So you have planned attrition in your.
Well, it depends on where those kindergartners, or those current kindergartners break in terms of when they come back. It depends on a number of factors that are embedded in those, in in some of the numbers that Susan laid out for us. So, you know, we'll, we would make, we'd make a decision, like we did this year. Again, that assumes a normal set of decision-making elements.
I mean, just, this is really not, it's a little bit of a side note, but I think it's worth mentioning just that, the, you know, the work that we're doing with the current faculty on on small group instruction for reading, and kind of upping the, the interventions in the classroom and and the core instruction, really, there's a, you know, there's a payback with maintaining your staff and, and having the benefit of them staying with us after providing trainings and and getting on the same page with assessments. I think, you know, I think it was a shift in thinking for the elementary teachers to keep spreadsheets with, with data scores, and that's something that. And, um, that's something that, you know, we, we need to continue so we can monitor the progress and monitor the effectiveness of the instruction. And when you have the same people on your bus, then it's easier for the work to continue. It makes, it's just, the continuity is really helpful for kids.
Yeah. But if the staffing was down, you, all the people on the bus would have the spreadsheets and the tools. It would just be, people got off the bus because, you know, they, you didn't have the.
I mean, I understand that it's not the most compelling argument, but that there is an impact in terms of, um, you know, having to retrain somebody else or having to, um, put more things on one person's plate than they were accustomed to. So.
Yeah. And it assumes we come back up the following year and need to hire somebody new. So I get that. I, I want to pause. Nermina and Martin, um, I know I've done a lot of asking questions and talking, but I want to check in to make sure that we're hearing your voices too, or you want to share.
I share, oh, sorry, go ahead. I think I share your concern here, Tom, on the perception, especially given the, the, the situation of the people, the town, the community. And, and putting forth a budget that people, um, will support. I think we, we should most definitely take every precaution, uh, on, on how we do this. Yeah, I understand. I would, uh, I definitely would hate to lose, uh, any of our, um, uh, great teachers. But if there's no need to fill a void that we, we have, say even currently, a kindergarten teacher, I see he a budgeted for three. So if there's some shifting around, it can happen to fill that depending on where these, where these kids come in. So I, I, um, I kind of see that with you on, uh, budgeting for more and then only doing, um, what we absolutely must. Obviously going line by line. I'm sure there's other things that, that we will, uh, discuss. But in this, um, situation and in this particular topic of staffing, yeah, the gap is huge. My, uh, my son will be going into seventh grade next year. He's one of the twenty for the, for the class size. We'll probably be struggling. So that's assuming we go back. Uh, I hope we go back. Kids hope they go back. Next year. That's, you know, it's a good sized class for, for the kids that are gonna be out of sixth grade into seventh. Hopefully they can, they can fill all the voids. But at the same time, given the stress of the, of the town and the people and, and the community, uh, we all kind of should take that into consideration a little bit. Yeah. Budget high, but do, do only what, what we, uh, absolutely must.
Thank you.
I think there's, there's, uh, just a lot of variables, uh, going into it, budgeting so far out. Getting one or two more kids into these grades throws those numbers pretty high, uh, with the policy. Uh, being prepared for that is definitely worthwhile. And if there's open positions that we can avoid filling, you know, that's one way to do it. It is gonna be a tough budget year. I think we all know that. And the, the unknown at this point is, uh, it's unknown, unfortunately.
Can I just add one other thought? And this is kind of what happened, um, when we went from the school-based document that, that our leadership team, um, worked on to the SAU meetings. And, you know, this is, this does feel like a sticking point. And yet we worked really hard to be very fiscally responsible in the rest of the budget and have a budget that actually comes in lower than the default. And, um, you know, so this was, this was our highest priority, just so you understand that. Maintaining this staffing pattern was this and the technology plan were our two highest priorities. I mean, something has to be a priority. And so for us, it was the things that impact the kids most directly. And, um, so one of the things that, that we did when we met with the SAU leadership was we had this conversation and then we went back and looked at everything else and then revisited this conversation in the context of the entire budget. And I don't know if that's something that you wish to do or not, but, um, I just wanted to just make that point that, we worked hard to be able to put this forward and we did, we made every effort to take away unnecessary, um, funding wherever we could in other areas.
I agree. And, and, and it's clear that you did a lot of hard work. And if it should come in at, at a minus number rather than at a level number, that's the responsibility that, you know, to look at that too. So I don't doubt that you sharpened your pencil in all of the other areas. I'm just saying we may need to sharpen it here too.
So, I mean, thi- this will, this will undoubtedly be a topic of discussion at the Budget Committee. It is every year. I agree with Tom. We could look at this from the opposite view as well. So one option that we could do is we could still, we could still have the two kind of potential scenarios. But we could, we could reduce the account by, by one teacher and indicate that we will, the board will, in the budget, the, if, if the enrollment is such that it warrants adding that, that teacher back, that the budget, the, the board will approve adding that unbudgeted teacher in the school year. And we're afforded that opportunity next year because what we could, you know, normally, I mean, so that's on budget, so we don't have the funds. Well, what we could do is, right now, we, we have eighty-five thousand dollars that we under budgeted the health insurance. Well, we can just budget as normal, the health insurance. I mean, we, I mean, we did that to, to potentially save some money, but we could have that kind of a, like a earmark in the event that we could potentially need to hire a new teacher next year. So we could, we could go the, the, do the same, the same exact scenario. We'll go the, but from an optics perspective, reduce by one teacher with the commitment to hire that person should the enrollments come, come out higher.
That's, that's a good thought. The, the challenge with that is, I think it's two teachers, right? Um, not one. And we may not have the flexibility to do both. But I think as we go through this, Matt, the whole budget process, we need to look at everything, special ed. I know we, we had a reduction in special ed, but do we need to anticipate that there might be somebody else that we need to take care of? So I'm okay with coming back to the staffing the next meeting or, or at, at the end of the process. I don't want to get stuck on this. I just, we, we, we're gonna need either a different model or models or better answers around this to, uh, to get it passed.
We're gonna have to justify the fact that we're under our school board policy, which is a, which is a well-thought-out and predetermined right number of kids in the classroom for the benefit of the kids. And if we're under it in three areas, that's gonna be a really hard sell to the Budget Committee. Even with the.
The kindergarten teachers do we have right now? Two at North Hampton, right? So we are, we are proposing here three. So that's one position we can play with, I guess, to not fill and shuffle people around.
No, I, I disagree on that. I don't think that's one, because I don't think you know. I think your number of kindergartners is, is less predictable than ever because of the number of kids who left. We don't know if they'll come back to first grade or kindergarten. I think, I think kindergarten is, is less. Kindergarten is very unpredictable normally, um, here in the districts. But I think next year it's even more so. I, I think, I think you can say you, you have a position and you don't know where it is, right? To, to take Matt's approach. I think you can do that. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't pigeonhole myself as to a grade level yet. I, I, I'd keep that flexibility.
No, no, no. And, and I, I agree with that. And I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that there is, yes, there is a position, what grade level that, that may be, but it's one less, say, person we need to look at to say, oh, we gotta let go of somebody.
That's true.
You know, I'm just saying that, that's one little area there that wherever that may happen in, in whatever grade is that we don't have to possibly fill. It may not be ki- kindergarten, it could be one of the, you know, fourth or fifth grades, uh, areas. It's just that for the budgeting or the people number, um, argument sake is one, one spot.
And yes, absolutely. I a hundred percent agree with you. And that's, and that's the case to the Budget Committee of the responsibility. I mean, we, we had this number of positions budgeted this year. We didn't fill them. Because we, we didn't, we didn't have need of that position. So for those on the Budget Committee that want to talk about, you know, whether we're responsible or not, we have, we have recent evidence that, that we can be very responsible in looking at our numbers and not filling a position that we don't need in a particular year.
Can I, can I just throw one other point out about the, the approach of cutting it and bringing it back if we need it? And because I've lived this honestly in other places. And when you, when you cut a position on paper in October for the next year, the staff knows, they all know it's coming. Then your least senior teachers start looking for a job in March. And they can sometimes, like, you know, they think that their job's not going to be there for them.
Well, that's, that's, that's assuming, I mean, if it's one position, we have a vacant position. So it's no one's jobs at jeopardy with one. I assume if there's more than one, but.
Well, I, I hear multiple problems with everything that, that's going on right now. One, we've got thirty-seven kids projected in kindergarten. We have to have three teachers because if we don't, we fall below our school board policy there. We, we end up with too many kids in the lower grades. Two, junior teachers should not be panicking to go find jobs. The, the, the underperforming teachers should be panicking to, to go find jobs. So I'm well aware of the nuances around, um, experience and longevity. But it's, unless I'm misinformed, it's one of three factors in, in eliminating, uh, positions. And so the notion that junior people are gonna panic is unsettling to me and, and, and tells me that, not tells me, but indicates that the, that, that the, um, evaluation process, it makes them feel vulnerable. So that's a concerning statement.
So I'd love to have a discussion about all that, but not during a budget meeting. Susan, I don't, I don't agree with you on that. For the simple rea- I've experienced that. Even in, in a situation where, as Greg said, evaluation's a big component. But we have an opening. So that's true when you don't have an opening. It does have first and second year people begin to look around and say, could that be me? But there's an opening. So I don't agree.
Well, we have a job share that's gonna go away. So there is, there is potentially a person.
Yes.
So Matt, question for you. Do we, these numbers right now are projected based off this, what's currently happening this year? Or does it include the, the children and parents that opted out of this year back into this model?
So it includes, it includes actuals for this year and then it adds in families that we were able to. So Susan, um, was able to, we reached out to, um, all those families. So it includes families that indicated that they would return.
Okay. So any, any additional there would be just, um, kind of coming out of a, out of a, a new set of, of, of attendees, not, not existing people that, that opted out?
So anything more than what you see here would be like move-ins.
Move-ins, yeah.
Um, the one, the one kind of uncertain number here is the, the kindergarten number. Uh, because we don't have a full picture of those actuals. So there is, there is some just, um, historical, looking at historical averages and, and kind of extrapolating there. But that's not, um, that's not an actual number.
Hey Matt, is it move-ins plus those that, um, we were unable to contact? Or the non-responders? Or was it just, if they didn't respond to say, I'm coming back or I'm not coming back to be already included?
Yeah, I, I think, Susan, how, how many did we not get a response from? Do you know?
In, in the, of the kindergarten group, I think it was maybe, uh, three.
I, I wouldn't encourage us to add anyone that didn't respond in any grade in, because they have a right and they may be coming back, right? If someone said, no, I'm not coming back, you know, then that's fine. But if they.
We, we added in, like, so that some of the homeschoolers, there was two kindergarten homeschoolers, two first grade homeschoolers. I think we didn't get a call back from one of them and then one of the private school people, I'm not sure we heard from. And somebody who just kind of red-shirted. And then the homeschoolers are in the upper grades, uh, fourth and fifth. And I think we did add those back in.
Okay.
I mean, the other thing that's happened, that there's a bubble coming through too. There's that first grade thirty and then, you know, second grade forty, thirty-nine. Those are, once those hit the, the third, fourth and fifth grade with that, with that policy of sixteen to twenty kids, that's a significant, that's a significant drop in, in, um, in attendees. With three teachers. It's, it's gonna end up having to be adjusted. Something's gonna have to be adjusted.
Oh, in future budget years, you mean, Greg?
Yeah, in, immediate future budget years. So we can sort of ma- maintain status quo now, but, um. Yeah, I don't, I didn't want to use that term, but it kind of, it kind of is. But we know what's coming a, a little bit. You know, we've got some, and, and it's not, you know, in order to get to three teachers in a class, it's gonna have to be like forty-seven, forty-eight kids.
Yeah, and that's, and that's why, and that's why we do this exercise really. I mean, we, we, I mean, obviously we're looking long-term and trying to ma- maintain stability. But, um, I mean, we've, and, and the bubble years are difficult, obviously, because we, we don't want to be switching every year. But, um, but I mean, I mean, you've seen in the, the last number of years, we've, you know, we, we've adjusted accordingly, um, and paid reductions.
So quick question, are the, to teach, so we have the open spot in kindergarten, but if we drop someone down, that, that could cover that. What's the, I'm not familiar with the certifications. Can a, can a fifth grade teacher drop down to the kindergarten level? I know there's a whole, do they want to? Or they?
In most cases, right? I think there is a particular license, um, in those grades. But some people have K to five and other people have pre-K to two. Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah. So generally speaking, Greg, the answer is yes. Generally speaking.
All right. So, so we'll, we'll, we'll put some work into, um, kind of providing some, some different, um, potential enrollment options, kind of high-low. Um, and, and bring that back next, at the next work session to discuss further. We want to move on into the budget.
Yes. And thank you for all of your work on this. I know that was probably not the easiest conversation. But it doesn't mean that personally, that I don't appreciate the work and the thought that went behind this. So thank you.
And I guess that, I guess the last thing I just want to leave you with is, is the circumstances that we're in. And, and the worry about catching kids up, that that, that was a, weighs heavy on our minds in terms of doing right by kids. And if it was a more typical year, you know, we are thinking it might have been slightly different.
So should we be talking about, um, um, ways to, to catch kids up? Like is, is the, do we increase our EAs or do we increase our support staff in particular areas?
Well, I think we have a, a plan for right now. But as I said before, I, my preference is you have your more skilled people with students who are behind and not, not your less skilled people. And so EAs typically don't have to have a, you know, have teaching licensure. We have maybe just one or two who do. So, um, I would always prefer for kids who are struggling to be with a certified teacher for.
Susan, you'll need to help me make the case with that, um, by explaining why having smaller classroom sizes in one or two grades helps all the kids versus hiring a, somebody in, like a reading specialist or like a math specialist that can target and target the specific students that need help and lift them up. You don't have to do it now, but that will.
In, in a nutshell, I guess I would just say, you know, the first line of, I mean, defense is the wrong word. The first line of offense in, in promoting, um, achievement is your core instructor. And your classroom teacher delivers the core instruction. So your classroom teacher has the most. So your classroom teacher has the most, the most possibility of making the greatest impact. So you can have interventionists and they can come in addition to the classroom teacher, but they don't take the place of the classroom teacher. They should like supplement and not supplant the teacher's instruction. So. Raising the level of your core instruction is one of the most effective things you can do.
Correct. Well, we're picking one grade to do, one or two grades to do it in with this model, right? We're saying we're going to be overstaffed in the third and fourth grade. So, and this model, so they're going to get the benefit. And everyone else doesn't get the same impact, even if they are students, even if they're behind in a different grade. I just, it, it, I'm not saying that the intent's not there. I'm saying that we haven't been able to make the case for it.
Yeah, it's a way, I'm sorry. It's a, for a but, for the Budcom, it's, it's kind of a weak argument, right? Because they're, they're just going to say, you're within your class. If you get rid of the, the third teacher, you're still within your, your class. So you should be able to do everything you need to do in your class with the amount of kids. It's going to be nineteen, not thirteen, but thirteen isn't in your, isn't in, in your, um, structure. The nineteen is. So if I'm, if I'm the Budcom guy, I'm saying, well, your, your, your school board policy then is out of whack. If you're saying you need three teachers with thirteen kids apiece.
So, so I, I understand the point completely and respect the point. I, I think our thinking, one of the things we looked to for some research to just kind of back this was the, is, it's research around students that have interrupted, um, formal education. And it's typically assigned to students who speak another language, ESL students. But there's a lot of research that just says, when you interrupt instruction, it can take, just like Matt said at the beginning, up to two years to make that time up. So it just doesn't, didn't feel to us like this was the time to make those cuts. And like you, like, like I forget who said it, but you know, next year might be the time. I think you were alluding to that, Greg. But in our, in our opinion, this year doesn't feel like the time to do that.
Well, I respect your opinion and I, and I agree with your opinion because you guys are the ones that are the experts here. I, we just need to find a way to defend our position with the budget committee who's going to be looking, who's just looking at the numbers saying this is out of whack. That's all.
No, I, I, I understand and I doing my best.
Yeah, yeah, I know. I'd have to think, uh, think out of the box on this one. Phil, I feel like you were about to interject something. No, okay.
So, um, so for this account, we actually do have a slight decrease, uh, at two point four million dollars. Um, and just, um, so, so this includes a two point seven five percent cost of living adjustment and step increases. However, um, I, I'm sure you've, as you recall, we've had a number of staffing changes. And we were able to hire the, the new teachers at lower rates of salary. So that's really the bulk of the, of this, the, the reason for this decrease. Um, also, I just want to point out that, um, I, I alluded to it, um, in, in my introduction about, um, Spanish. Uh, that, that's just an area that we're focused on as, as to, um, you know, it's, it's, it's not something we're ready to propose. But we know it's, um, you know, once we, we finish that program review, um, we, we anticipate that that's, that's something that may come, um, come to fruition. So, um, we, we just wanted to include that as a, a, a point.
By the way, Matt, can I just say, because they'd point, the budget, this budget committee would point it out to us if it were otherwise. Um, the argument you just made about salary, I believe that's the second consecutive year that's happened. And I believe there were also decreased costs in health insurance as a result of staff changes for last year. There were, there's a number, in other words, there's a number of costs that were associated with turnover of staff over the last two years that have caused decreases. Again, if it were the alternative, I'm sure this budget committee would point it out to us.
A great point.
All right. So we include the listing of all the teachers and their salaries. The next account is for our educational associates. So these are our paraprofessionals that are in our regular education. Our, our lower grade level classes, kindergarten. Um, and this, this reflects the, um, the step increases as well as their cost of living adjustments. Uh, so that's proposed at seven, just over seventy-one thousand dollars. Um, our salaries tutors account is level funded. So this is primarily our, um, music instructors. So these are U, our UNH interns that come in and provide, um, uh, our musical lessons for our students. Um, our substitute, um, account is, um, reflects, um, our teacher substitutes, um, as well as our paraprofessional substitute, um, costs. Um, we're level funding that at fifty thousand dollars. Um, this has been somewhat volatile in recent years. However, that's primarily due to a number of, um, long-term, um, like maternity, we long-term sub, um, engagements. Um, page eight is contracted services. So this reflects the SAU-wide, um, ESOL, um, teacher that is hired that supports, um, four of our districts. Um, this is, um, you know, about six thousand dollars higher than last year. That reflects, um, the individual's cost of living adjustment, step increase, um, as well as the, um, apportionment or the allocation by district is based on the prior year's enrollment. So it's, it's, um, allocated, um, based on number of students per district. So, um, that's at twenty-four thousand dollars. Um, and, and I will note that this, again, the reason we went to this model is we are receiving, um, better service with a, with a full-time, um, position with, you know, more time available at a lower cost than if we had, um, if we had contracted this out, um, individually by district. Our repair and maintenance of equipment account is level funded at one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Um, this is primarily for our, um, piano tuning and other instruments repair. Our rental lease equipment, um, you, you'll see a, a bit of a decrease here. So this is for, um, our copiers, our, our lease payments, um, for our, our copier contract. So we did this past year, um, we did consolidate, um, our copier agreement across the SAU through Canon. Um, so, uh, in, in the past, in previous years, this has kind of been a disparate process where different school districts and even within a school district, there are separate agreements by copier. Um, but now that we've consolidated that across the SAU, we are seeing some, uh, some pretty good savings. That's about, what, uh, four thousand dollars? Thereabouts, thirty-five hundred. Um, our supplies account, um, we've reduced.
Quick question on the copier, sorry. So I think that's awesome that we saved money on the, um, by having a centralized contract. Thank you. Do we anticipate, so part of this is on a price per copy basis. And last year we were down because we weren't in school for a bunch of the, um, months. And then this year, you know, we've got three grades that are remote. Do we anticipate that this should be budgeted any higher based upon increased usage?
So this is based on last, um, the prior year's usage, right? So it's, it's, it's based on usage on a full year.
Okay.
So, and that's, and that's a good point, Tom. Um, we, these, our budget assumptions reflects a fully in-person model. So, um, you know, so we're not, we're, we're assuming we're going to be in person. There will be no remote component. Um, so that's, that's how we budgeted.
Okay. So we're all good here. It was just a huge swing from the eleven, um, eleven thousand. And I, and it didn't seem like it was all savings on a contractual basis. So, but if you already calculated for it, perfect.
Yeah, and entirely, um, we, we, we were overpaying for, for, for copiers, frankly. So it is, it is contractual.
I think I have to look at last year's too, because, um, we, we purchased more, uh, workbooks than we typically do in this year, anticipating that perhaps we might need to send things home, um, from time to time. So, um, I think that's actually a good number to work off of, because I don't think we'll go over this year. Not just because we have kids that aren't here, but because we purchased workbooks.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
So our supplies account is budgeted at forty-two thousand five hundred dollars. So these are our various, you know, um, general classroom supplies, um, you know, our unified art supplies. You know, greenhouse and steam, um, supplies. These are, um, generally speaking, um, very similar to, to prior years. Um, again, based on a full year in-person, um, environment. Um, I'll also note that, um, we have, we have utilized, um, some Title II grants in the past to supplement this. And we do, um, anticipate potentially utilizing some, some grant funding to, to supplement this account, um, next year as well.
This is where we would get the, um, the grade three foundations, the durables from, um, the grant. And then in another line, you'll see a consumable line, um, that goes up just slightly for the third grade foundations workbooks. But so the foundations addition is largely cost neutral or just almost cost neutral.
Our books print media account is budgeted at thirty-five thousand thirty-six dollars. It's a slight decrease, um, from last year. You'll see the, um, is the, the decrease reflects the, um, that last item. Um, the bridge is K two. Um, we have an increase in middle school math work, workbooks. Um, there's a slight increase in the ELA consumables. So that would be the, um, the foundations and worldly-wise workbooks or consumables, um, as well as an increase in some of our, um, periodicals. So. Any questions in regard to books? I know there's a lot of text here. All right. Your equipment is level funded at three thousand dollars. Um, this is for our PE and science lab equipment, um, that we've allocated for next year. And we do have, uh, you know, examples of various equipment that we plan on purchasing. Moving into special education, we budgeted, um, forty, forty-five thousand five hundred fifty-three dollars for the, um, director of special services position. So as you know, this is a split position between the assistant principal. So this is, um, half of the salary. The other half is in the administration accounts. Um, our salary certified staff, um, account reflects our special education teachers. Um, this reflects, um, the, the, um, cost of learning adjustment as well as step increases. And that's budgeted at five hundred eighty-seven thousand two hundred eighteen dollars. Our salary specialist account is budgeted at a hundred and twenty-five thousand seven hundred and sixty-one dollars. Um, this is for our OT and BCBA. Um, in this, you'll see a, a pretty significant savings here. And this is, this is, um, due to, um, a staffing change. So we, we did, we do have a new BCBA at a, a much lower rate. Um, we've also adjusted the contract, um, to reflect less days, um, needed. So that's a fifty thousand dollar savings. Our salaries, um, for educational associates. So these are paraprofessionals on its budget at five hundred and nineteen thousand thirty-two dollars. Uh, we are, um, reducing, um, our proposed, um, positions by three. Um, it's, it's still, um, there's still a decent increase of, you know, fifty thousand dollars. And this is per the, you know, and, and includes the cost of living adjustment as well as step increases.
So just from a process standpoint, um, and, and I'm just looking for process information. This is not a challenge in any way. Um, when you go through the EA staffing, um, it, how, how do you do that? Is it like, you're looking at the, the students that need it or is there one assigned to each classroom, then the students that need it? How does it, how does it happen?
Yeah. So, so when, when we look at our special education, um, educational associates, um, well, first and foremost, we need to follow their, their IP's.
Yep.
So there's some that are one-to-ones. There's some that are, you know, that could be classroom-based for groups. Um, so I, I don't want to put, I'll let Ayesha or Susan speak to it in more detail. But, um, in some cases, you can, you can, um, you, you can maximize, I guess, maximize or minimize, I guess, is, is another word, that the use of EAs by, um, by how we, how, um, depending on how students are grouped in classrooms. But ultimately they're following their, the IP's. But I think they were able to schedule, or they feel that they can schedule appropriately to reduce those numbers. So Susan or Ayesha, do you want to speak more to that?
Um, I, I can speak to the special ed component of it. So, um, Susan and I, um, asked Sue McLaughlin to kind of look at the services pages of our students, um, specifically for, um, the EA supports, whether it's a one-to-one or, um, what we called shared and what the hours are and those kinds of things. So in looking at our student population, we ha-, and, and also talking with our special education staff, there's at least one student that we could possibly definitely fade a one-to-one off of. Um, because, um, there are, there has been progress made um, in the area in which he needed the one-to-one service. Also looking at, um, a one-to-one that's in the upper elementary grades and fading that away as well. Um, more so from a transition standpoint of, um, you know, working with, indep-, getting them to more independent, um, so, um, levels, um, without needing that one-to-ones, um, support as well. And then group, as, um, Matt, Matt was saying, grouping in, um, students in a classroom. If they need a shared EA, then you would put, you know, a couple of kiddos that have a shared EA in that grade, in that classroom, rather than having them split out. So, um, in looking at it, we are looking at scheduling, um, reducing the EA position by three.
Got it. So there are twenty-six EAs, um, twenty-two classes, K through eight. Plus we have pre-K and I'm sure there's some in pre-K, um, as well. Um, but it's, and all of this is following kind of the individual, um, plans for the students. But there are seventy-two students with special ed needs, right?
Correct.
Right. Okay, okay. Um, and in the past, I think sometimes we would hire EA because a student needed it, uh, needed them. I shouldn't say, I apologize, needed them. And then, as you were saying, Ayesha, when the student kind of progressed or, um, even left, sometimes we still retain that EA position. Makes sense if we need to reassign it to another student. But in this case, if we didn't need them, we made the adjustments.
Yep.
All right, great. Thank you.
All right. We have a dollar in salaries, um, EAs out of district. Our, um, this, this account salary clerical is for our administrative assistant in special services. Um, that's at forty-seven, seven eighty. That reflects the cost of living adjustment and step. Page twenty-three is workshop seminars, level funded at eighteen fifty. So this is, um, you know, for any conferences, workshops, travel reimbursement. Uh, and there's, there's a few conferences that are outlined that, um, we plan to attend. Page twenty-four is professional services, budgeted at a hundred and eighty thousand nine hundred ninety dollars. Um, this is nearly thirty-one thousand dollar increase. Um, again, this is based on student need. Um, you'll see that there are increased needs in, uh, for physical therapy. For the, um, teacher for deaf and hard of hearing, um, school psychologist slightly, um, and the Orton Gillingham reading.
Hey, Matt, can we go back one quick second? I apologize. On the workshops and seminars for special ed, Susan and Ayesha, if there are other workshops or seminars that we should be considering for you, Ayesha, new to the role, new to the public institutions, that might not have been the ones we did in the past, I, I would just encourage you to, to add them if we have to spend more in, to, you know, I think we should do it.
There is one more, um, and it is through this association that I believe we didn't add. Um, and it's a March conference. So I will find out that, um, that cost and get that to Matt immediately.
Thanks.
There's, there's also, um, some, from free support through, through organizations we belong to and through the New Hampshire DOE that we're taking advantage of too.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, you know, we're investing, um, where we should, that it's not all about cutting, right?
All right, um, and I, I also just want to note that, um, you know, we are, we are providing compensatory services on this current school year. Um, and it remains to be seen if, you know, that there could be additional compensatory services that are required, um, in next year as well. Uh, that's to be determined. Our legal account, we've level funded at five thousand. Um, as you know, this can be a highly variable account, depending on the year. Um, tuition, um, is, has been reduced to a dollar. Um, that's, that's in our district placement that has aged out. Um, we currently have, we currently have no students that we, that, um, that are out of district.
So legal's another one, just, and I, I know I'm going backwards, Matt.
No.
You're good about transitioning. Legal's another one that if, if we should down, whether it's now or down the road, consider setting up a, a trust for legal so that we don't have the backlash. Um, or if we should fu, be funding this more than, you know, five thousand, we know that we're gonna probably blow through. Um, it's, I understand it's unpredictable. But I, I think it'll create less stress on the budget if we, if we're able to do something different down the road and, and, and budget this more realistically.
Yeah, I mean, so we have a, we have a couple legal accounts. So for this legal account, for instance, I'm not, I'm not terribly worried because that's what our special education expendable trust would be for. So if, for instance, we did have, we were way out of whack in special education legal fees, we could always, that's, that's the purpose of the expendable trust, that contingency. You know, our other legal accounts, um, more for general counsel. That, that can also be, you know, variable. However, I think the, um, the scale, like, it's not, I, 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 I mean, there, there hasn't been, I, I, I don't, I can't, I mean, obviously anything can happen. But generally speaking, um, we, I, I'm not concerned about, you know, excess costs in legal, um, in that regard.
But, back to what we can discuss. Based elements out of the, uh, special ed trust and that, that makes sense.
I cannot, I can also add to that. Um, sometimes Primex will cover some of our, our, um, legal, whether it's a due process issue or, you know, filing for due process or other issues in special education. Uh, we've had Primex cover some of those things before, so that's also an option.
I mean, generally speaking, our liability insurance covers a fair amount of our legal fees, which is Primex. Um, I, I can think of a, a few, uh, in other districts, at least two situations where they, they are providing that, um, that legal counsel and they're, you know, they'll cover whatever settlement or cost might be associated with it. All right, um, so the, like I said, tuition is, um, is seeing a big reduction and that's certainly helping our budget. Um, our supplies are budgeted, um, at thirty-six fifty, that's, um, level funded. Um, so that's general special education, you know, testing materials, CPI materials. Um, our equipment account, um, has been reduced to a dollar. Um, again, with special education, we have no known equipment costs that we, that, that we can foresee in the next year. That doesn't mean that we may not have equipment costs, um, should services change or we have a new student. Um, page twenty.
Should, I mean, knowing that it's four thousand, five hundred, a three-year averaging, and even if you take out the eleven thousand, it's, it's always up around fifteen hundred anyways. Should we really budget nothing in that? I mean, are we, is it, are we?
Well, in special education as a, as a rule, the special education department, we budget for our known services. Um, so I mean, and oftentimes that's, you know, for students that we have enrolled that we know that are coming, coming to us. And that's why, and again, that's the, uh, if there are any unanticipated costs, we, um, we have the special education expendable trust to, to utilize. So I, I'm reluctant to, to do like historical averages because then also that, that creates a level of subjectivity in special education budgeting, which I don't, I, I don't want to go down that path when it comes to like bu, budget committees questioning. Cause these are, these are based on IEPs that we are required by state and federal law to provide. If we open the door to, there's some level of subjectivity here, then they can, we open the door to them cutting it in the future, right?
Yep, that's a great point. Thank you.
The overage from this year was due to, um, two very expensive items that were needed for one IEP. So it's, it's hard to predict.
Okay, you know, I'm fine. So thank you both. I'm fine with Matt's explanation. I'm learning as we go here, so thank you.
Um, page twenty-nine, we've budgeted nine hundred and fifty-five dollars for dues. So this is for, um, professional associations. I, I believe, um, Ayesha, there was a additional cost as a new, as a new, um, director of special services that, that we were incurring. Um, whereas, um, the previous director did not have that cost. So that's the reason for the increase, right?
Well, actually, it's not necessarily, um, for a new director. It's just that there are different levels of, of, um, membership. And prior membership was the very.
I, I, I'm, I'm sorry, is, is, it was the in-person meetings. Um, so, so the previous director didn't attend those in-person meetings, but we strongly encourage that that happened. Um, it's, it's really invaluable from a networking and information perspective to, to, to meet with other directors and other districts and understand what they're doing and, and working with them. So yes, um, thank you, Caroline. All right, um, page thirty-one, um, salaries for coaches and advisors. So this reflects our extracurricular activities, um, stipends, um, per our CBA. Um, we've budgeted fifty-six thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Um, we, we've actually, um, reduced the total, um, potential amount. And we've done this in years past by five thousand dollars, um, because we, we don't anticipate filling every position for every, every activity, um, we, you know, based, based on numbers and, um, whether we have a group that wants to, you know, do, um, robotics or, or not. So that, that cha, that can change year to year. Page thirty-three, we've budgeted five thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars for officials. So these are for our various, um, athletic events. So this, this, um, so we've outlined kind of the, the maximum number of games that could occur. And then we actually reduced that number because we always have weather-related cancellations or, um, you know, uh, you know, there may not be a number of games as anticipated. Page thirty-four is speakers, we've budgeted at seven hundred dollars. This is a slight increase of two hundred dollars. Um, so this would be for, um, special presentations, um, at, at the school, either at grade levels or as an entire school. This is typically supplemented. Um, we, 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 we utilize title, um, for A and REAP grants in the past. And we anticipate doing that again this year. Um, the actual cost is, um, sign significantly more than seven hundred dollars. Page thirty-five is our admissions account. So this is for, um, field trips. Um, we've budgeted fifty-six thousand dollars, which is a five thousand dollar increase. And this, this really ref, reflects the addition of, um, three-day to night trip for the eighth grade class, as well as increasing the, um, sixth grade take flight, field trip and, um, additional seventh grade, um, experiences. We, um, Susan, do you want to talk about any of these experiences at all? I mean, it, it sounds like they have some pretty exciting, um, trips lined up with, you know, Hurricane Island and, um, it, it's, it sounds, it sounds, it sounds like a good return to that overnight. Um, I, um, oh, I'm sorry. I, I, I forgot to mention during the stipends account, it also includes the, um, stipends for the teachers who are, um, chaperoning, um, and, and leading these overnight trips. So if you recall, last year, we approved, um, providing a, um, nightly, um, stipend, um, for our teachers. So that's also included in the, um, this, the, um, that salary account for, for coaches and officials.
So, um.
The overnight trips are calculated.
Well, so what we budgeted, we budgeted, um, for Hurricane Island and that number is actually lower because for that next year, that'll be the smaller group of kids going. So we actually saved some money on the Hurricane Island budget because of the decrease in the number of students in that particular cohort.
That's the eighth grade trip is Hurricane Island?
Yeah, Hurricane Island's the eighth grade trip. And, and then last year, so honestly, we've just been trying to, um, you know, we're a little bit in survival mode this year. But at the, uh, the, and during the course of last year's planning, some ideas for seventh graders came up and the, um, with the team and the, you know, they wanted to try to get the Hurricane Island trip under our belts first. But we do have some ideas that, um, aren't fully fleshed out. But they, we figured we costed them out and, um, would need to meet with the teams again before we actually, um, put forth, um, actual information about the ideas, so.
How many overnight trips would, would this?
How many nights? Well, what we budgeted for was Hurricane Island at two nights and, and one additional trip potentially for seventh grade at one night.
All right, page thirty-six, we've budgeted seven thousand dollars for supplies. Um, this is, um, a slight decrease. So you'll see, we, we had increased the budget last year, um, based on, um, our supplies were kind, we, we were kind of low on supplies. Um, so we, we, we recognize that as a need. Uh, so we are bringing that down, um, slightly this year. Page thirty-seven, we have a dollar in equipment. Page thirty-eight, we've level funded dues and fees at one thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. So, um, this is to enter, um, various competitions such as our, you know, Coder Z competition, competition, our student leadership conferences. You know, geography, et cetera. Page thirty-one, we have a dollar in other expenses. Moving into guidance, um, we've, uh, budgeted eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars for our school counselor. This reflects the cost of living adjustment. No need for supplies, a dollar. Um, we've budgets just over seventy-one thousand dollars for our school nurse. Um, we've budgeted a thousand dollars for our school nurse substitute. So, um, this is, this is an increase. Um, in years past, we were unable to, um, to, to find nurses to substitute. However, um, this year, we, as you recall, we did, um, increase that nurse sub-rate. And we are finding that this current year, we are able to, we have had a nurse, um, substitute um, for a couple of days that our nurse was out. So, or I, I think it's even a partial days. In any event, we anticipate that to continue. Um, so that's something to monitor, um, because we don't have a real good historical idea how many days our coverage will get. But, um, we, we've allocated a thousand dollars for that account. Page forty-six, we've level funded our employment exam. So every new employee, um, is required for the, um, um, get a physical exam. Page forty-seven, we've budgeted twenty-five hundred dollars, um, for supplies. Um, this has increased, um, um, slightly. This is really just a reflection of, um, cost escalation of these, um, supplies. Uh, we've seen an increase, um, in cost for many of the, um, the standard supplies that the nurse has in, in her office. Page forty-eight.
We need to adjust it any, any higher for PPE or is that under a different section?
So, so PPE, um, would, would likely come out of the facilities.
Okay.
Account, and I'm, I'm hopeful that we won't need PPE in twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two.
Have it on the shelf. Have it on the shelf.
But that might be wishful thinking.
Thank you.
Forty-eight, we have a dollar in our software accounts. Page forty-nine, um, and just so you know, I believe th, this is in the technology account now. That's why it's gone down. So that's, that's, that's why, we still have the software, but it's been reallocated to the technology just to put all our software in one account. Page forty-nine, we've budgeted four hundred dollars for equipment. Um, so typically, we need our annual audio meter cali, calibration. I'm sure you all know what that is, I do. Um, but this next year, we also need, um, some additional equipments, um, as outlined. Stethoscope, um, pulse oxygen meter and a blood pressure cuff. Page fifty-one, we've budgeted eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars for our speech therapist. Page fifty-two, we've budgeted twenty thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars for our SLA. That's our speech language assistance. Um, and I'll also note that that's not the full cost of the salary. It is supplemented through the IDEA grants, um, approximately eleven thousand dollars. Page fifty-three, we've level funded supplies at two hundred dollars for the SLP, um, testing materials and supplies. Page fifty-five, we've budgeted ninety thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars for our curriculum coordinator salary. Page fifty-six, we've level funded, um, our curriculum professional development. So these are primarily, um, like stipends or hourly rate for, um, for various professional development or curriculum, um, work, um, as well as our new teacher mentors receive a stipend. So that's level funded at nine thousand dollars. Page fifty-seven, we've budgeted twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars for tuition reimbursement. So you'll see, this is a, um, a fairly substantial increase. And, you know, we, we had mentioned the savings that we're recognizing with, with our new teachers at lower rates. But that also, there is also some extra cost with new teachers, um, because they, because they don't necessarily have their master, like their master's degree or advanced degrees. They're currently in programs, um, to receive them. So we do, um, we, we've identified, I think, four teachers that are currently in school that will be seeking reimbursement for, per the course reimbursements, um, uh, provision in the CBA. Page fifty-eight, um, we've budgeted thirty-six hundred dollars for testing. The increase reflects the, uh, Fanta's and Pennell Benchmark Assessment System for Reading, BAS. We've already purchased some, um, but we need, um, we, we need to, four more, Susan, I believe. Yes. All right. Page fifteen-nine, uh, we've level funded workshop seminars at nineteen thousand dollars. Um, so this is for, you know, our teachers and staff, um, to attend workshops, conferences, um, for us to provide any in-service training, et cetera.
Will this get, Susan, will this get everybody through, um, like the open circle? Will this get, Susan, will this get everybody through like the open circle training, and if it doesn't, should we consider getting everybody up, you know, up and trained so that there's one common common SEL program?
So we've been utilizing some grant funds to do that, so currently, last summer, as you know, all of our middle school teachers had the responsive classroom, social emotional class online, and we were able to pay for some of that with some money from this line, but also with some grant funding. And for Open Circle, we currently have, I believe, Becca could tell you exactly, but we have three different cohorts going through it, and because one of the things that's things that's been beneficial is all these companies and providers switching to online modules, and so it makes it more accessible to teachers than driving to a workshop. So we currently have, I believe, all of our elementary people in a cohort, and we're utilizing either Title II or Title IV funds to pay for that.
Okay. All right, awesome, I just wanted to make sure that everyone had a chance to get through it, and especially with the kids coming back and having been missed out, if it's the same, it's probably better and got it, okay.
Hey, Matt, before you you keep going, we're at one fifty seven, we scheduled today till two o'clock. And so I know I I do have to stop right at two to jump into something else. So so with three minutes left, do we have any anything else on our agenda today, or is it just all this?
Just the budget.
Okay. Then I'm gonna propose we find a stopping point in the next page.
Okay. All right, so page sixty is professional development for our CESP employees, level funded at twelve hundred. Page sixty one, we budgeted two thousand dollars for books, print, media. And that ends that section, so perhaps we should end now?
Yep.
So all right, well, well, thank you all, I appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you, Matt and Susan and your whole team for pulling this all together. And we have our next session, I believe, next Wednesday. And we'll pick it up again.
Yeah, good work.
Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Yes.
All right, if everybody's in favor, we'll adjourn at one fifty one.
Anonymous.
Thanks.
Thank you.